District's video conference meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the Board during the public comment. Citizens input electronic sign up show the rules for participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the Board may listen and not enter into discussion on the issue raised. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:00 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Montero Ramirez, Shane Hagerty, Katty Woodruff, Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Michael Solis is not able to attend this meeting, and he is excused. Trustee Lucero, please lead us in a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God is invisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Now for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lucero. Ms. Matheson, do we have any citizens' input?
No, we don't.
Thank you. We'll continue with our board workshop. Dr. De La Torres, do you have any presentations for us to see?
President Ochoa, members of the Board, we have several presentations. The first presentation on the agenda item is our monthly, or as needed, discussion surrounding COVID-19 and any updates. As all of you know, it's gotten more and more difficult. But as a team, one of the first things we do every morning, of course, as you can imagine, is look at the numbers and wonder whether it will ever get any higher. And just when you think that, it gets higher. I want to thank Raoul Medellin. He has been providing us not only with real time numbers, but he's developed a system to project what numbers may look like a week in advance using current hospitalization rates, percentages, and then extrapolating that over a five day period to give us some great information on what we should anticipate on any given week. So, for example, we've already received the numbers that we might expect through this week. And based on his past performance, he has been incredibly accurate. And so at present, we're at about forty percent in terms of a hospitalization rate, which is about 1,790 cases, give or take. That number could reach 7,800 cases by the end of the week if it continues to go at this rate. Having said that, relative to our academic programs that were up until the beginning of this week referred to as learning hubs, and they were, as you know, located at specific or select schools that we held these learning hubs. However, the initial extension that we received from TEA or the second waiver that we received from TEA expired last week. And so, starting today, there was an expectation, and it's consistent with our Region 19 plan, that even if the rate is over twenty percent, that the Texas Education Agency and Commissioner Marath expected us to make our schools available to those students that they identified as priority students. Initially, we had anywhere between thirty and forty percent of parents indicating that if the schools opened, that they would feel comfortable sending their children. As you can imagine, as the numbers continued to increase, parents became less and less comfortable with that. And we are closer to about ten percent relative to the students that showed up at the schools today. And it can vary depending on the campus. But it is about one in three of the students whose parents had initially indicated that they were ready to send their children back. So what's happening in the community is certainly having an impact on our families. And they are obviously trying to protect and insulate their children from COVID-19. We continue to provide instruction remotely with the support of substitute teachers and instructional aides at schools where children may be coming, but they're still sitting in front of their digital device, their computer, and receiving instruction from their teacher of record that remains home. And that will be, as you might guess, that will be the next big hurdle or the next big decision as to when, in fact, will it be safe to return teachers? Certainly not while we are in the red zone. And as we move, eventually, I hope, move to the right into the orange, yellow, and green, just a reminder that we have to maintain those numbers for a seven day period before we can actually announce that we have moved from red to orange, yellow, and green. And so, at this point, in looking at Raoul's projections, it doesn't look like it's going to happen anytime soon. To complicate matters, we have Thanksgiving around the corner, which will afford our community a week to really make some difficult decisions relative to having family and others convene for the traditional Thanksgiving week, including the possibility that family members from other states and other parts of Texas come visit family. So I'm a little nervous about what the numbers could look like after Thanksgiving. And then, almost three, four weeks after that, we break for the holidays. And again, we've got another two, two and a half week period where traditionally, for decades, families have had a chance to get together and break bread and enjoy each other and give thanks for everything they have. And unfortunately, in 2020, that can be detrimental to what we're trying to accomplish as a community. As a school system, the numbers have not increased significantly among those students attending the hubs and those teachers and substitute teachers and instructional personnel that are trying to help and support those students. But it appears like COVID-19 is starting to have a real impact on some of our people, their families out in the community. So I completely understand the decisions that were recently made by the county judge and the rationale for it. And hopefully, that will gain some momentum. But it really, I think, will come down to how we treat the holidays and how seriously our teachers and employees are taking the time that they spend at home and really doing everything they can to insulate themselves and insulate their children and their family. Athletics, as you know, became a big issue. And there were a lot of reasons for my reluctance in suspending the athletic programs. I know that there was, there were, and continue to be different opinions. But we've always said that we would anchor our decisions to the numbers. And the numbers, both in our academic program and in our athletic program, while one is too many, have remained at significantly low levels. And I really believe it's because of the hard work that we've done as a school district. It is not common to see administrators, including principals and assistant principals, athletic coordinators administer medical tests. Yet, many of us have participated in that for the last two or three weeks because we understand that many of you are under some pressure to have an answer for why the SLED Independent School District continues to allow their students to participate in athletics. And the one thing we don't want to do is disappoint you. So we've all made it a priority every week to test anyone that plans to participate in a sport. And if a student tests positive or if a coach tests positive, we have, when necessary, canceled contests. But by the grace of God, we continue to live somewhere around the two percent rate of student athletes and coaches testing positive. And in cases where we don't believe we can mitigate the spread or can't accurately contact trace, whether it's a student athlete or a coach, then we favor caution and cancel the game. And that has happened on some occasions. But on most occasions, our students have had the experience of competing. And as you know, several of the teams have went on to the next level. Very important question asked is, what difference? It wasn't asked like that, but basically, it really dilutes our intent if the other teams in the playoffs aren't testing their student athletes. And one of the things that Ms. Leeper and our athletic coordinators, the team, have done is we've reached out to any team that will be competing against one of our teams, even at the playoff level or the state level, and have offered to administer tests to their team. And so, I don't know whether or not Big Spring, for example, has responded, but it's been made available. Because one of the things that I'm seeing is not all of those school districts who are eligible and who could receive the test and administer the test have even opted to pursue the test at this point. The system that we put in place, and this is not any other attempt than to acknowledge everyone involved, on Thursday of last week, was highlighted by Abbott Laboratories for being the model system in the state of Texas. And CNN has taken an interest in what our school district has done to allow students to continue and compete. And so, they've come out and taken some B-roll. And that was the same day that KVIA came out and filmed the Bel Air cross-country team tested. And while I continue to reinforce that it's not a zero risk process, I think that they've arrived at the conclusion that, in terms of how it's administered and how efficient and effective it has been, it is a model for other school districts to replicate. I think that was further reinforced last week when the three neighboring school districts that opted to suspend their athletic schedule made the decision to return this week and offer athletics to their student athletes and their communities. So we're moving forward with athletics. We've got some ideas. Moving forward into winter sports, one idea is the possibility of rather than having games dispersed throughout the week, having a conversation with the other district decks to see whether or not, in basketball, much like in volleyball, we can select a day or two days and run it like a tournament style, where weekly games, rather than being spread out Monday through Friday, would happen all on one day, affording us the opportunity to test everybody at the beginning of that day and know that athletics are over for that week, which gives us a chance to see whether or not any student athlete tests positive in the aftermath of participation. I think the thing I want to impress most upon you, first and foremost, in the community, is that this is not being cavalier. It's not about being bold. It's not about being right. It's about affording students, who in many cases need to finish the season, to be considered for a variety of scholarships that may be the only way that they can attend colleges and universities. It's not perfect, but I'm very, very proud of those who have helped implement the system over the last month and six weeks if we're talking about the academic program. So I like to tell people that we have always been a district that takes the elephant and eats it in very small bites. That means we take care of today, today, and we do what we can today. And if the numbers and the data and the science don't support moving into tomorrow, then we will suspend it. If we can continue to do it at this rate and it works, then I'd like to continue and move forward. Everyone's put so much into it, beginning with the student athletes who have been practicing since July to get ready for fall sports. And at this point, I think all of us are prepared to answer any questions that you may have relative to what we're doing about the COVID-19 pandemic.
Questions? We have another presentation?
Ms. Lucero, I believe, is wanting to ask.
Oh, okay, Ms. Lucero, you had a question.
So, thank you, Dr. De La Torre, for answering about the, if our kids travel or they're playing the out of town. So if the other, if they, for some reason, refuse, what happens in that case? I have a couple of questions, but if they refuse, what happens in that case? Will they still be allowed to play, the students that don't want to participate in testing?
That's a great question. And because we thought that may be a possibility, there were two things that we were worried about. The first was that teams, and you were here and you were instrumental in the Plano High School football game where they expressed concerns about playing us. We thought that, given the numbers in El Paso, that we may run into something very similar where we go out to compete against a team and they declined to play us because we come from El Paso. That didn't happen. The second is, we send a letter to the parents of our student athletes, especially those that are going on to postseason play. And we remind the parent that athletics are not compulsory. They're not required. They're not mandatory. And given the numbers, as a parent, I can see why there may be some hesitation and that they should not feel any pressure to allow their child to participate if they don't want to. That there is no adverse impact on saying, I don't feel comfortable. My child isn't going. And that is true of whether or not the other team is willing to test or they're not willing to test. We have to keep reminding them that athletics, for most kids, not the ones that may be thinking about a scholarship, are an extracurricular, co-curricular activity that isn't worth, in some cases, either risking the life of the student athlete or someone in the household who may have pre-existing conditions or may feel uncomf- if, in fact, somebody tested positive in their household.
Okay. And are these, are the student athletes that are currently participating in this pilot program, are they remaining COVID negative two, three weeks after they've played? Specifically, two to 10 days, are they remaining negative?
To this point, they have. We do have a case today in full transparency where we have a student athlete from Riverside High School who tested positive today. And we're in the process of doing the contact tracing to see whether or not it emerged from within the team or whether or not there is someone else in the family or someone else who he may have had contact with outside of the school.
Okay. And another question regarding the positivity rates overall for the district. And I know we update it fairly frequently on the website. But for our teachers that are choosing and our janitors and our support staff, cafeteria workers and all the others who are choosing to either go to their classroom and the ones that aren't choosing that have to work because that's their role as, you know, our janitors and our support staff, what has the positivity rate been, I guess, on average or overall? Or can you break that down for me a little bit as far as that positivity rate?
Yeah, I guess the easiest way to break it down would be that the students, the adolescents positivity rate is around two percent, whereas the adults are closer to five percent.
Okay. And one more question, well, go more. Are the kids that are, okay, the children that are attending our hubs, are we also rapid testing them?
Brenda, I believe that we had planned to rapid test all of those students. Were we able to accomplish that this morning?
Good afternoon, or good evening, sir. This is Lindley. Actually, we have a pilot tomorrow at an elementary school. That will be our challenge, is the smaller students, teaching them how or doing it for them. And so, tomorrow is our first pilot at an actual learning hub where we have parent permission to test students. When we know that we can do the elementaries, we'll roll it out across the district. Middle school and high schoolers are not a challenge, as we've seen with the athletes. So that will be coming shortly as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm interested to see what, how those results come out as well. And not that I, you all know my take regarding sports. And I really do understand the hard work and the efforts and the potential loss of access to scholarships. And so, I'm not trying to open up the door any further, but I do want to ask the question because I think it's a valid question. How is it, and I'm going to do my best to make sure I get this out properly. But we've decided that sports, and we've, I guess, through UYL, right? Because UYL also kind of drove some of this decision making, that that's competitive sports is something that we're going to pilot and focus on and make sure those kids have access to compete. But, you know, in hearing and speaking to folks in the community, how is it that we've chosen that? And what about the other fine art things that are important to those, to students as well? And that access scholarships? And that also want to be able to have access to something besides what they're doing at home virtually? So where are we with that? And are we even making a plan for those students?
Are you referring to, for example, the band and dance teams, cheer, that type of thing?
Not necessarily dance teams, but just fine arts, yeah. So why aren't we, I guess, giving the same opportunity? You know, if we're planning, we always pride ourselves in equality. And I'm not pushing it. I just want to know how we decided and prioritized. Is it because there's more of a risk or just what is it? Why is it that we can't rapid test those students and have that same opportunity?
My understanding is there is no more risk. The conversation that, for example, band directors had, and I think that could be true of dance teams and, I don't know what to call the ones that kick, drill teams. And drill teams is that they really can't, they really can't perform their routines in as safe a manner as athletics. And for whatever reason, my understanding was that El Paso, Socorro ISD, and the other band directors decided at the beginning of the fall season that they were not going to perform or compete this year because they did not want to spend the money to have these expensive choreographers come in to develop routines where each of the band members, for example, have to remain eight to 10 feet apart as they move around the field. They need to be very close to one another. Saltotricks, Rangerettes, all of them, the same thing. In hindsight, I can't think of another sport that has as much contact, for example, as football does. So that argument is not very strong. But that was a decision that was made regionally. The pressure that we're getting now is, why aren't we letting them at least attend the game, sit apart, perform? And the reason for that was because the regional plan says that if you are in a code red, there are to be no spectators, that it's to be limited to the football players, their coaches, and their ancillary staff. I don't know that it's fair either, but that was the decision that was made.
Well, I'll tell you, Dr. De La Torre, and so, I mean, I think there's, we've said this several times. I know I've said it several times. There's several unknowns with COVID-19. There's just, there's just too many factors that come to play. And there's a lot of things that we just are out of our control. But I do, I do believe that, I appreciate and I applaud the efforts. I think it's important that we do our best for our students. It's always ultimately about the students. But it does concern me and it still does, it still does weigh heavily on me that we, that we were unable to, for at least the two weeks of the shutdown, to be able to be good partners with our city. And that part does concern me. And I guess at this point, it's neither here nor there. But I do have concerns in that area. And, you know, as I expressed before, and I've had, you know, the Pediatric Association reach out. And it's just, it's really hard to justify, even though we have pilot testing and we're doing our best in our bubble as a school district to keep everybody safe. It does weigh heavy. And I hope that if this occurs again, where there is a citywide, countywide shutdown, we can find a way to be better partners. That's all I have to say, this, Steve.
I understand, and I appreciate that that was a very difficult decision. I will say that when you're the superintendent of schools, my responsibility starts and stops at the district. And I think it's easy for some leaders to say that, let's just all suspend everything, when I think we, as a district, have demonstrated that we have a model that supports our student athletes and our students. And our responsibility, my responsibility, is really limited to the students. Not that, you know, I walk by or ignore the fact that, you know, hospitals are overwhelmed and there are other types of things going on in the city. But I take care of my board, my teachers, my students. And I'd like to believe that I don't need, I don't need a consensus of all the district superintendents to lead. You hired me. You didn't hire all of the superintendents in the region to make decisions. Let me finish and then.
No, but it concerns me. You're saying about the super, that has nothing to do with the superintendents.
What does it have to do with?
City, the state of our city, Dr. De La Torre. That's what, that's what it has to do with. Our city is literally in crisis. I'm not, honestly, I don't, they are not even in my, in my thought frame at this point. The other superintendents and what the other school districts decided is the state of our city. And we know, we're well aware, while our athletes were testing them, so for that moment of the rapid test, hopefully, they're safe, right? But we don't know that their parents are and so on and so forth. And again, that's neither here nor there. What I'm saying is for the two weeks that there was a shutdown, that we be part of that as a community, because we are part of that community. We just, we are. And not, not, it has nothing to do, I think you did a good job with the tools that you have. And you are doing a great job, and so is, so is our employees and staff. I'm not knocking that. This is my own view on it.
Okay.
There's one more question about the hubs. Do we have enough coverage at the hubs regarding permanent substitutes? Do we have good coverage there? Are we okay there? Do we need more coverage?
No, I think we're okay. I know that some of the rural school districts reported last week at our Region 19 meeting that they were having a hard time getting substitutes out to Fabin's in San Eli. And I completely understand that. But at present, we have enough substitute teachers because I think a lot of them relied on substituting as one of the primary elements in their family income. So I think they're appreciative. And again, the numbers came in so low. I mean, we have a school with 16 kids in it, in all grade levels today. And it's, I think if it ever got to 30%, Catherine, I think you're right. I think, I don't know, Brenda? Or Bobby?
Hi, good evening, President Ochoa, Board of Trustees, Dr. Delatorre. Um, Mrs. Osseto, we've actually trained probably 800 substitute teachers. Currently, we have 1,200 active substitute teachers. There are some campuses that have been short substitutes. However, given that we've opened it up to substitutes that have not worked for us in a couple of years and they've come on and gotten trained, we're in a good spot right? My pleasure.
Any other questions? No? Dr. Delatorre, you have another item?
Yes, we do. We have an agenda item, uh, that, uh, speaks to the proposed consolidation of, uh, Hacienda Heights Elementary School and North Loop Elementary School in the fall of 2021.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board and Dr. Delatorre. Let me share my screen really quickly and I'll bring up this presentation. Don't do that. Well, we'll do it this way. Doesn't want to let me present. There we go. So as Dr. Delatorre mentioned, we have a proposal for consolidating Hacienda Heights at North Loop in August of 2021. As you may know, Hacienda Heights was constructed in 1952 and has not had significant improvement or modification to the building since then. And it is one of our, um, forest-conditioned buildings. So it's, would be expensive to invest in and to convert to refrigerated air, not to mention just the overall condition of the building doesn't warrant the investment. North Loop Elementary happens to be probably the oldest school in the district, but it was completely remodeled and renovated in 2007, so it's virtually a new campus. And thus, our recommendation is that because both campuses are currently underutilized at less than 50%, we would recommend consolidation of Hacienda Heights at North Loop Elementary. Here is a seven-year trend history for both campuses. Hacienda Heights has experienced on average per year, a 2.5% loss of enrollment, while North Loop is experiencing 3.21% loss per year over the last seven years. When we look at the net cost savings that the district might recognize through the consolidation, you can see that through employee salary savings with benefits attached, it would be about $1.9 million annually. Utilities, campus operating costs, maintenance costs. And then those savings are offset by any transportation costs we might incur to consolidate the school's rendering an estimated total district savings of about 1.8 million per year. The detail of the FTE reductions, as always, when we consolidate, we have duplication in our administrative areas, so the principal, assistant principal, counselor, and nurses, generally speaking, are duplicated already. And so we would absorb these elsewhere in the district. That does include some teachers or custodians to clerical staff as well as cafeteria workers. The salaries themselves are 1.8 million, the difference between this one point, I'm sorry, 1.48 million. The difference between this 1.48 and the 1.9 you saw on the former slide is the benefits and associated costs for the employment to the district. So once we consolidate, the total enrollment for North Loop is projected to be 770 maximum, probably more along the lines of 730 to 750. The teachers from Hacienda Heights would follow the students, provided there's room. If we find through the seniority analysis that, um, we have more teachers than we do students, then of course, Ms. Russell Garcia and her fantastic team will work to find them a home within the district. And I'm proud to say that through all of the consolidations we've done over the last couple of years, I don't believe we've, we've lost any single employee as a result of consolidation. So support staff won't be adversely impacted. And to the extent transportation is needed within the policy limits of our two-mile radius outside of North Loop, of course, we'll be providing that. And generally, we hold harmless students who are, who require transportation if they're on the border of that two-mile radius or just slightly inside of it. Special education units that are currently at Hacienda Heights would also be housed at North Loop in the future. And so also, one of the things we want to look at, and this is a lot of visual images, so I'm going to start with the image on the left side, which describes the elementary school boundaries. And you see those in the various colors. So Hacienda Heights is in yellow, Sage Land is orange, North Loop is blue, and Constance Holbert is in the purple. The middle school and high school trajectory is outlined by the dark blue line. I'll point at it with the mouse, although I don't know that you can see it, this dark blue line running along the left side of the visual image. Now you'll notice on the right side in that diagram, we show this odd little purple, um, area that's in the North Loop elementary pattern. And we have this large purple section that is in the Constance Holbert, um, community or attendance boundary. Now, the odd thing about those is based on the learning community trajectory, the students in this area attend Constance Holbert as an elementary student, but when they enter middle school or high school, they end up in the Bel Air community. While conversely, this group down here in the large triangle, attend Constance Holbert for elementary, but when they move on to high school and middle school, they end up also going to the Bel Air feeder pattern. So the adjustments that we recommend to the attendance boundaries would make it look more like this. On the left side, you see what the elementary boundaries would look like by consolidating Hacienda Heights in the North Loop community. We would have this large blue group here. And keep in mind, North Loop is a relatively large school, while Constance Holbert has this neat yellow boundary in the bottom left quarter, bottom left quadrant of the, um, map. And Constance Holbert only has capacity for about 450 students, so it's a much smaller school. And then on the right, you can see the new boundary that we would create that now follows clearly along North Loop. And so any student residing below North Loop would fit or would move along to the Riverside Middle School and High School, while those above North Loop would go on to Bel Air. Um, one of the things that we have said with any consolidation or attendance boundary changes, just a reminder, we're an open enrollment district. And those students living in that little tri- odd-shaped figure here or in this triangle here, they can go wherever they, they want to go. And so we would hold them harmless as well. And if they want to continue attending Constance Holbert and, and move the other direction, we would allow it as well as the group that attends Constance Holbert in the big triangle, triangle section. And so then, as we move on to how this rollout will work, of course, we're presenting to you this evening. Tomorrow, early in the morning and in mid-afternoon, we will have staff meetings with both the Hacienda Heights staff and the North Loop staff. November 12th, we'll have a co- a community meeting with Hacienda Heights families. And on the 19th, we'll have a community meeting with the North Loop Elementary families. Between January and March, cabinet will meet with both campuses, will review the transition plan together, and transition meetings with the campus and district staff will begin. And then on February 8th, which I believe is a Monday, the rollout plan would actually be posted on the district's webpage. I believe that concludes the presentation, so let me stop sharing and come back here where I can take any questions that you may have.
Ms. Woodruff?
There we go. I'm unmuted now. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I really appreciate the, the, the thought processes that went into this transition plan. And I, I believe that by giving it the proper amount of time and also the, the very, um, logical but also important aspects of, of safety for our students. And, um, as far as the age of Hacienda Heights, uh, being such an old school and not having, uh, all the kinds of things that they have at North Loop, the ventilation and all of those things, it provides, I, I think, a safer environment for all of our kids to move them in that direction. And I really do feel like it's a good plan. Uh, that being said, I did have a question and now I've kind of forgotten what it was. Maybe I'll think of it in a second and, and can come back to it. With something to do with that last slide that you showed, oh, the transition plan, that's what it was. So your meetings will be done virtually. Uh, do you expect that that's going to, um, to be very well attended in the, in the, in the community? I, I wonder, just because I know that, uh, this isn't a rich community and I wonder if they might not have, uh, access to internet and stuff like that? What, what's your projection is what I'm asking?
We have had a consolidation meeting virtually. We've also had some school renaming meetings virtually with the community and they've worked well. Also, keep in mind, we've provided hotspots for every student who didn't have internet access. So they have a child's device, a student device, and they have a student hotspot if they didn't have internet connectivity already. So we believe that, um, we've made access available to them. Now, whether or not they choose to participate, may be another question.
Right, right. Well, I think that if we make sure that it's posted out there and, and that they can, they can sense the importance of their attendance so that they can have their voice heard. I think that, I think it should be well attended, but that's my hope anyway.
Ours as well. You're welcome. And I will say that there will be a letter that goes out this evening after the meeting. Of course, we want to brief the board first, but immediately after the meeting, we will be sending out community letters to both schools. So they will get good notice and then the principals will be reaching out as well.
Sounds like a good idea. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Mr. Bustillos?
Ms. Sleeper, how are you today?
Great, thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Um, um, on the rezoning, I know that we have an apartment complex that kind of goes on the opposite side of North Loop where, um, Constance Holbert gets a lot of the kids from that. How, how does that going to affect the enrollment of Constance Holbert?
So keep in mind, the students can still go to Constance Holbert if that's their choice. We always leave it open and we hold them harmless. We don't treat them as, um, transfers. They are allowed to continue going there. And we've even considered their siblings as whole harmless members to continue attending that school if they so desire. Um, open enrollment lets them go anywhere they want to and then we protect them because they've already opted in or have been attending that school.
So, so how many students are we looking at from that?
So there are 124 total that attend Constance Holbert from that area. So that many actually go into the Riverside, um, or into the Connie Holbert from above North Loop. Keep in mind, down below in the triangle, those students that would feed into Riverside Middle now and into Riverside High, it's offsets by about 50 students. So the net loss is probably in the neighborhood of 70 students if they went straight with the trajectory and didn't follow their choice and remain where they were or remain where they were already attending.
Oh, that's a big number, though. I'm already a low enrollment school. I don't know that, that, uh,
We have plans to help that low enrollment.
Huh?
We have plans to help that low enrollment. So I, I think forward, well, if you think about it, the new Riverside Elementary is going to draw students. We believe that that will be, um, something that's, that's appealing to students. And then, um, we are looking at what we may be able to do across the district. So as you know, sixth grade is supposed to be in our middle schools and we've not been able to accomplish that across the district because of either the size of the middle schools or that they weren't built yet. In August of 2022, our hope is that we will be able to move all sixth graders into their respective middle schools. The only campus that's not quite ready for it yet will be the Bel Air Middle School because it's just not large enough, but we have an idea about how we can address that as well. Dr. Delatorre may want to pull my ear for talking, I, well. And so we do have a plan because we believe that that will strengthen the Riverside Middle School. And when we strengthen it, it will strengthen those kids that are then going on to Riverside High.
I, I just, you know, I just, I don't know, I just don't see the balance on it. Um, losing out those kids, you know, I know, I know we have a open enrollment and I know kids have a choice no matter what, even in high school and all that stuff. I just, uh, I really don't see the, the benefit to, to my community in this and I don't see the benefit, especially with those lines, losing those 124 kids. It, it, I, I really, it can be detrimental to my community and Constance Holbert. Especially if we start losing those kids and those kids realize that they can go and continue. I just don't see the balance on it. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Ramirez?
Thank you, Chris. Um, well, I, I'm a little, Ms. Sleeper, I'm a little disappointed in, in the discussion on the sixth grade. Um, I had visited with, uh, a couple of the, uh, of the associates and, um, and, uh, expressed my concern about perhaps sixth grade needed to stay in elementary uh, and use a, you know, use that model. Um, and it, it was my understanding that our sixth graders that are in elementary right now, that they outperform the ones that are strictly in middle school. And so, um, I realize it's not fair to hit you with all this, but, uh, um, I'd like to come back and visit on this again. Uh, you know, when it's, when it's fair and, and, and the numbers are present themselves. But, uh, um, I know at least Dr. Chacon and Dr. Kennedy know how I feel about these things and, and, um, I'd like to discuss this again and, um, we can do it here, we can, you know, do it at a workshop, but I would very much like to discuss this. Thank you, President Ochoa.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Good point. Any other questions? Um, I have one. Uh, I'm very familiar with Hacienda Heights since my wife used to teach there and I know it's, I know the state of that school. I'm not very familiar with the renovations they've done to North Loop. If, if you could provide us with a, something for me at least to know what is at North Loop as far as, as layout and what is that they renovated in 2007?
Certainly, we can provide a floor plan and photographs for you. It has new furniture. It also has what the principal calls, um, middle school equivalent fine arts area. Um, all of the inside was remodeled. It's obviously converted to refrigerated air. So in terms of comfort and space, it is a 21st century learning environment. We'll be happy to provide you photos and
And, and safety, if any of these students go down to North Loop, um, how safe? I'm sure you've done some, some, um, investigation on that and some, some plans as to guaranteeing their safety. So I think that you're talking about busing them if they're out of the two-mile radius?
Well, if they're Hacienda Heights, they're moving south to come to North Loop. And so, yes, if they're outside that two-mile radius, we would bus them from the Hacienda Heights area down to North Loop. Obviously, any that are outside the attendance boundary, if that's where they opt to go, I believe that's, that's on them to get transportation to the campus. So I don't think you're going to have an issue crossing North Loop because that's already a clear boundary. Those students on the south side would go to Constance Holbert already.
You would avoid that. All right. I just appreciate a update on what, uh, North Loop looks, looks like. I mean, I've never had the pleasure of going down there and I should go down there.
I would, uh, I would add that for Charlie, uh, if we can provide him information relative to how many students in that, that little triangle area end up going to Riverside versus how many end up going to Bel Air anyway? Um, that might be helpful because I don't think it's the 160-some students. Um, one of the things that happened, and I think all of you know this, is that the way our district is organized is that even if you tell them that they happen to be in a new attendance area, if their older siblings, uh, went to school at Riverside High School, it, it wouldn't matter if they were up in the Eastwood area, they might still go to Riverside High School. The one thing about this community is they're very, very loyal, uh, to the high school that their older siblings. So we will dig deeper and we will look at all of the layers and we'll get that information for you. And I understand where Charlie's coming from. Uh, I do think that, uh, Lindley, uh, has expressed a couple of things that are going to be really important. A new Riverside, um, elementary school. And I look forward to the new career tech ed program that's becoming more and more attractive around the district for students who want to go into something other than a baccalaureate degree. Um, but we've got time, we'll do it a baby step at a time. I talked to, you know, Connie a little bit about it and we want to move slow. We want to move deliberately. We want to take input from the community. We've always been about that. We've always been about not just, you know, quick decisions, but the reality is that, uh, given the, you know, the financial, uh, the possible financial reduction, although I just read, uh, something today that said that, uh, TEA, believe it or not, is fighting to keep us whole by allowing us to get the same amount of revenue that we received before the COVID. by allowing us to get the same amount of revenue that we received before the COVID for at least this next biennium. And as a member of T U C, we're all saying hold us harmless. And I don't know whether or not they'll be able to do that. I I don't trust politics. Uh, but I certainly hope if they can do that, uh, we can, we can move forward together. But a million and a half is is something to to think about.
Ms. Lucero.
That was, you kind of answered my question, Dr. De La Torre. Well, I I was just curious as to um, we're essentially going to redistrict that area kind of like what we did with Alicia Chacon um, and my feeder pattern here. And so while you uh, get that information for trustee Bustillos and stuff, that's, are we going to then stick to, like, are the the transition plan as far as BDs and stuff, that's kind of the the schedule that'll be? And will will there be any um, decisions or role that the board will then play as far as as we move forward with these decisions?
Yeah, the ultimately, the majority of the board uh, has to endorse or support these decisions. The plan that um, Lindley just outlined i- is similar to the plan with uh, Capistrano uh, leaving um, not Capistrano, South Loop, leaving that area and moving up into Capistrano to try and create um, efficiency in terms of our our revenue, basically. And accepting that uh, schools like Hacienda Heights, schools like South Loop, um, there are no planned improvements for them in the future. So they're not going to be the kind of environment we want our students in. And then you layer on everybody's sensitivity to ventilation, uh, the ability to open windows, air conditioning, all the things that we want for all kids. And it 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 really becomes what we've said all along, we need to right-size our district. But we are sensitive to the fact that we have seven learning communities and uh, seven of you have to be responsive uh, to your constituents. And so we don't do anything without uh, your input or your guidance or parent meetings. I mean, Catherine, I took a BD at uh, uh, LeBaron Park, but it was really the right thing to do.
That's right. Will it will it still be um, an international school with the transition or what are the plans there?
I'm glad you brought that up. There's something that that we've all been discussing on the instructional side, and that is that that we've had what's referred to as the COVID slide. We've got kids that have fallen so far behind that as much as we may want an international school at uh, Hacienda Heights and then ultimately at North Loop, we're going to have to really start thinking about refocusing on English Language Arts, reading, writing, math, uh, science, and uh, um, social studies. Uh, and there may be situations where we can for for at least the time being, we can no longer add all of these um, extra programs because we've got, potentially, we have a generation of students who have missed out on about well, they've missed out for nine months, but the the impact to them, it looks like it could be as much as two years of COVID slide. And so if we're going to ask our principals um, and our teachers to just myopically focus on let's get their reading level where it needs to be, let's get their writing level where it needs to be, the question will become, do we take time from those fundamental gotta-have and introduce second and third and fourth languages at schools where uh, the enrollment may have not been that strong to begin with?
I hope we, I think we definitely do need to consider that as we move forward because I mean, we are on on, I know we al- we always bring this up on this side of the freeway, you know, things are, things are a little different. And you know, we do have Alicia Chacon and things like that, but I I I want to be able to to ensure that for those kids that that want and and have been already involved in that opportunity for that to to continue. It's important. We we have that um, in other areas of our district. And I know we have to balance it, but I I I do think that kids can achieve a lot more. And it's not always going to be like this. It's not always, I I have hope that we're not always two years from now, we're not still going to be discussing, you know, what are we going to do with COVID nineteen? I have hope that things will will eventually get back to some type of normalcy. And so the decisions that that we make now, we have to think also uh, about that.
Yes, absolutely. The Alicia Chacon's will still be there, the Young Women's Leadership Academy, uh, STEM in the Parkland area, those that are well-established, that have always had uh, a, you know, a high number of students interested, Riverside C T E, we're not going to retreat from that. If if the new ones, we were just starting to kind of get going, the question is, do we do, do we take a step back and say, hey, a lot of these kids, and and the numbers will bear it out, a lot of these kids are performing as a unit, the way they were performing in two thousand fourteen when I joined the district. That means we may have lost five years of of progress, no fault of their own, no fault of their parents. It's just online learning, and you can ask, you've got two educators on on the panel right now, is just very difficult for some children.
I hear you. I hear you.
Hey. Ms. Lucero, any other question? Mr. Ramirez.
Um, ju- just to comment on a couple of comments on Techo, what Catherine was saying. I I was at a meeting last week and with some colleagues and we were talking about a number of things and and, you know, we don't know what normal looks like. And and she used a term that she had heard from somebody else. She called the great pivot. You know, ever since the great pivot last March and and uh, and I think that's probably a true statement. And and, you know, and and the the essence of the discussion was that regardless of what happens in the future, regardless of whatever normal is, um, we're never going to get back to where we were before. Um, and that we're always going to be, it's going to be hanging over us for the next several years. Um, and so we're going to have to have two models of school, the traditional face-to-face and 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 the virtual, should things happen again, and the political winds be being what they are, um, that could certainly change uh, going forward. And so um, I I just wanted to say that out loud. And then the other thing too is that I saw where Dr. De La Torre and 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 Charlie, I saw where Amarillo I S D has opened, uh, or is in the process of opening an advanced vocational school. Um, and you know, the the discussion out there is that we've got lots of kids um, uh, kind of like the discussion on on international schools, you know, getting back to basics, that sort of thing. But we also have that group of students who, and I know we don't like having this discussion, who have no interest in going to college, even though we really, really push hard for them to want to consider a secondary uh, institution. And so um, uh, this Advanced Vocational Institute uh, does a number of things having to do with um, does a number of things having to do with robots and drones. Um, and then also too, an advanced electronics um, where they have a smart factory and that sort of thing. And then with Amazon building their fulfillment center here in town and maybe some other things happening, um, that would kind of feed into that. Um, you already, you know, we're already way ahead with with the Riverside vocational of the program, you know, that maybe it's something we need to do. I I don't know anybody from Amarillo, but it might be some, certainly something worth looking at uh, going forward. And like I said, since we've already got the big part of this done or getting done, um, you know, making some adjustment and other things might not be a hard thing to do. So anyways, I just wanted to share that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Any other questions? Now, let's proceed to the next item, Mr. I mean, Dr. De La Torre.
I believe the next item has to do with our uh, audit report and uh, whether or not anyone has any questions.
Yes, sir. We have Ms. Sersetes, I think. I think it's the report on the A F R, is it?
Yes, that's correct. It's Selena Sersetes with Whitley Penn.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Um, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre, we're pleased to present the results of Isleta I S D's financial statement audit and federal single audit for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Our team is shown here. Uh, these are the individuals that would have been on site, uh, but we did everything uh, remotely. I do want to think, first of all, I want to thank my team, obviously, but I do want to thank Isleta's management team, all the accountants, everyone at the district really, because part of the audit is just not to de- um, deal with the accountants within the district, but we're dealing with information technology um, teams and anything related to attendance, um, and and also your federal program. So I just want to thank them for their cooperation. And not many districts, well, I'll say there's a few districts that haven't been able to meet the deadline because of all of the hurdles. And so it it's it's, it it took a lot of effort for your staff to still make the deadline, the November deadline, even though there was a waiver. So kudos to your team for getting us all of the information that we needed to complete our our audit. I do want to thank Eileen Comple Macalinto. She's our senior manager on the engagement. She did all of the heavy lifting and uh, managed um, the associates and the senior associates on the engagement and then worked directly with your management team. And she is also uh, present here tonight. So I just want to thank her um, for for her help. And thank you to Mary Haney and and all of her staff, um, that they're a great team to to work with. As you know, the purpose of our audit is to issue an audit. And as if we go, as we move from left to right, the opinions get better, right? Nobody wants to receive a disclaimer or a qualification of an opinion. Every entity wants to receive an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. It is quite a task. Um, you know, you all are accustomed to receiving an unmodified or clean opinion every year, but it does take quite a bit to get there. It all starts with our planning and our risk assessment. We're looking at turnover, whether it's in your federal programs or key financial areas. We look at the internal controls over those key areas, test the controls, uh, and then determine if we can rely on those, um, and see if it could lead, any deficiencies could lead to uh, material misstatements. When the district, the management team closes the books, uh, we begin our substantive testing, meaning we're starting to corroborate, confirm, um, and vouch the information presented um, in the audit report. And everything is to uh, gain sufficient audit evidence so that we can issue an opinion, one of the three that we spoke about earlier. I am pleased to report that Isleta I S D is once again receiving an unmodified opinion over the financial statements. They did not um, have any internal control findings related to financial reporting, any of the internal control areas that we'll discuss here in a bit, and there were no findings related to compliance. So this is separate from federal compliance that we'll discuss here in the next slide. So this has to do with state procurement laws, any public funds, investment act laws, the district complied uh, with those laws and regu- regulations. Because you do spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in fact, you spent about fifty-five million dollars in federal funds. You're subject to what's called a single audit. Um, with that, we're required to select major programs for testing every year. So the larger programs have to be rotated every or tested every third year. Um, and then the smaller programs replace the larger programs that are taking a break, if you will, every year. So this year, we tested Title One Part A, Title Four Part B, which is your twenty-first century grant. And then, of course, the new funds that came about because of COVID nineteen that came from the Texas Education Agency, the CARES Act or the ESER uh, was tested as a major program. That amounted to about two-point-seven million dollars. Your Title One Part A is very large, at about seventeen million dollars. And then your twenty-first century um, is at about one-point-four million dollars. We're required to make sure that the district complies with the Office of Management of Management and Budget, uh, all their rules and regulations that comes from the White House, and they issue guidance every year. So we're pleased again to report no findings over internal controls, no compliance findings, and you are receiving a clean opinion over these three federal programs. The internal controls over critical areas that we've tested, so in addition to the controls over compliance that we just spoke about, we're looking at the overarching controls that are present within the school district. We're looking at human resources, payroll, procurement, accounts payable, and then information technology is critical because it feeds all of these areas. We're looking at significant revenue sources as well, such as your child nutrition revenue. And then attendance changes are also critical. We're looking at the at the attendance period uh, that captures, that that actually feeds state funding. So if there's control issues in that area, it gives us, it either gives us comfort or concern that the the inputs that determine state aid um, need some work or are not are not correct. Again, we didn't have anything to report or control deficiencies. And then finally, what is the district's financial close and reporting process at the end of the year? Um, are there proper controls to ensure that the figures presented in here in the audit report are proper? Any questions before I move into the financial highlights? Okay, so if we look at these highlights, this looks at your Exhibit A one, which is your statement of net position. So it captures everything that the district owns and everything that the district owes. So it includes short-term and long-term assets and liabilities, whereas your general fund only reports current resources. It doesn't re- report long-term um, liabilities, nor does it report capital assets. Your total assets and deferred outflows totaled about one-point-three billion dollars. These are reported in millions. Uh, your cash and investments totaled four-hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars, and your capital assets, net of its depreciation, totaled a little under seven-hundred million dollars. You have deferred outflows of resources related to your pension and O P E B that we'll get into here in a bit at seventy-five million dollars. Your total liabilities and deferred inflows um, totaled one-point-three billion dollars. Bonds and maintenance tax notes payable make up the bulk of that at nine-hundred-and-five-point-four million dollars. And your deferred inflows, again, pension and O P E B, go hand in hand with the liabilities shown below. So your net pension and your net O P E B liabilities totaled one-hundred-and-twenty-four and one-hundred-and-sixty-point-eight million dollars respectively. I included an asterisk here by each of those items because it represents, these two items, and even the deferred inflows and outflows uh, represent the district's proportionate share that's determined by the teacher retirement system of Texas. It is simply a reporting mechanism that came about because of one of the governmental accounting standards. So this is not a liability that you'll have to write a check similar to your accounts payable liabilities. You will continue to fund T R S at the statutorily determined rates. Every biennium, the state adjusts those rates, and the district and the employees and the state contribute into these plans uh, it to to ensure that it's well-funded. Um, and and to make sure that it meets its obligations to the retirees um, for healthcare purposes as well as for their pension. In the end, you, the district does have a net deficit. Again, this reports everything that the district owns owns owns, excuse me, and owes. If we were to remove the net pension liability and the net O P E B liability, you would have a positive net worth. But again, it's it's these um, items that aren't true liabilities that you have to pay that is causing the net deficit. And you're not alone. This is a this is very common across the state for school districts. What's important to highlight is looking at the general fund or your operating fund. So if we look at your actual revenues, they totaled four-hundred-and-nine-point-three million dollars, and those revenues did exceed the budgeted amounts by nine-point-four million dollars. Your actual expenditures of four-hundred-and-seven-point-five million dollars were under budget by sixteen-and-a-half million dollars. Overall, you almost broke even for the year. Your revenues exceeded your expenditures by about four-hundred-thousand dollars. Your expenditures did increase by about nineteen-point-eight million dollars. And remember that last June, you were passing your two thousand twenty budget with the effects of House Bill Three that required you to increase your payroll costs. So the bulk of that had to do with your payroll cost, and we'll get into that here in a bit. So your ending fund balance totaled a hundred-point-six million dollars with unassigned fund balance at seventy-five-point-three million dollars. That represents a fund balance that's available for appropriations. The assigned fund balance is ten-point-three million dollars. That's been a, that has been set aside for a variety of reasons, and many districts are setting aside uh, money such as this due to the COVID nineteen, and it is the legislative year. year. If we look at your revenues, you'll see, in the general fund only, you'll see that, again, your revenues totaled $409.3 million, a definite increase of about $19 million from the prior year. State aid makes up the bulk of your revenues at $295.6 million. The district depends heavily on the state with property taxes totaling $75.1 million. Your other state funding totaled $20.7 million, and that reflects the amounts contributed by the state on behalf of the district. It's not actual cash that is received from the state, but it is simply a book entry to reflect what the state is contributing on behalf of the employees. And there's also an offsetting expenditure to the tune of about $19 to $20 million sitting in other, on behalf expenditures. Your federal funding totaled $12.6 million. The bulk of that is made up of your school health and related services revenue or SHARs, and then you also have indirect costs that you recoup from your federal funds as allowed by the state, and that indirect cost rate is determined by the state and issued by the state based on the inputs provided by the district. So again, state aid, 72%, property taxes making up 18% of your revenue. If we dissect your expenditures, again, $407.5 million was your total expenditures with instruction and related services at 62% in the yellow portion of the pie, or $251.9 million. The second highest category is your facilities, maintenance, and operations at $46.6 million, instructional and school leadership at $34.8 million. I do want to point out that 85%, so if you look at your total general fund expenditures, 85% or $348.5 million is all payroll costs. So you're paying your employees, your teachers, the bulk, you know, the bulk of your expenditures is geared towards those payroll costs. Last year, your payroll costs were $327.2 million. So again, about $21 million increase due to House Bill III. The other item I like to point out with districts of your size is your general administration of $14.5 million. It is at 4%. TEA typically sets a threshold of 8%. In other words, if a district is approaching that 8% or is at or above 8%, that means that they're not operating efficiently. So you all are well below that 8% given the size of your district and the operations that they're, that it is responsible for. This next slide dissects your unassigned fund balance that we just saw in the previous slide. So if we look at your remaining unassigned fund balance at the $84.5 million, that equates to 76 days. In other words, if we were to continue to spend, or ISLTA ISD continued to spend at the $407 million expenditure pace and all revenues were to cease, then that fund balance would last for about 76 days. The red zone, the minimum 30 days, equates to $33.5 million in unassigned fund balance. The optimal is about 75 to 90 days at $100.5 million. And again, given these unknown times, you need that cushion because nobody knows what's ahead of us, and so you need to be able to have those reserves in your, in your fund balance. And again, that unassigned fund balance is available for appropriations and for the budgeting process. Child nutrition program, the debt service fund are presented here as well because you do adopt a budget on an annual basis. If we look at the child nutrition program on the left-hand side, your actual revenues were $18.6 million, and they did come under the budgeted amounts by about $7 million. You had actual expenditures of $19.8 million, and while they were under budget, your fund balance did decrease by $1.2 million with an ending fund balance of $2.2 million. Now, child nutrition programs across the state were hit hard this year because districts continue to feed the children and their families during the pandemic, and so this is a normal occurrence, and we're seeing this whether we're in Austin DFW, the Houston area, or in far east Texas, child nutrition programs continue to operate and needed to feed the children. This particular fund is a little bit different in the respect that the Texas Department of Agriculture doesn't want you creating a large fund balance. They want you to operate lean, and so it's a little bit different when we look at the general fund where they want you to have 75 to 90 days in fund balance. Here, they want you to have no more than 90 days, and so the Texas Department of Agriculture wants you to continue to spend that money. So that, that particular fund is a, managing that fund is quite a balance. The debt service fund, actual revenues were $37.4 million, and these are property tax revenues that are levied at the interest in sinking or your debt service rates. They were over the budgeted amount by $1.5 million, and your actual expenditures were $35.2 million, and they came right under budget at $20,000. This particular fund solely exists to levy taxes to pay your debt, and you pay your principal and interest on your outstanding debt. Your fund balance did increase by $12.2 million, and you have an ending fund balance of $56.4 million. One thing to point out is school districts with a fiscal year end of June 30th, of a June 30th year end are very different from an August 31st year end. At the end of that fiscal year, you're required to turn around within 45 days and make a very large payment, including both interest and principal, and that equated to $28.3 million for ISLTA ISD, and that payment was made in August 2020. So you need that fund balance to be able to make your bonds, and you know, you can't risk being delinquent with those bonds, so that's needed. Again, the reserves are needed because you haven't levied the new tax. That doesn't happen until October. You don't start collecting on the new tax till later in the year, December, January, February. So again, that, those reserves are needed in order to make these large payments soon after year end. Any questions for me?
Any questions? I can't see that board, so I don't know. Any questions?
Yes, Cruz?
Yes, Mr. Ramirez.
Um, I, it's not so much for Ms. Eddie Sadas as it is for perhaps Lindley. Perhaps she can answer it. Was it, Lindley, I don't recall if it was last year or two years ago, we had an exception on child nutrition. I think it was two years ago, perhaps. As that, was that issue resolved? It wasn't, wasn't our fault. It was just our, some type of accounting issue that we had to catch up to. I take, I guess we've taken care of that, and that's not an issue anymore going forward.
I think Selena was about to chime in. Yes, they identified that finding, and they follow up on it, and they audit again on that same fund. That fund gets audited every year, and so I think what she's reported to you this evening is there are no findings, no notes, no exceptions, nothing in that fund, so it's been resolved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Just, just for my curiosity, on the general fund balance, what kind of factors set that? I know she had optimal and all this. I know that it varies by district, but what major factors come into play for setting those limits?
Yes, President Ochoa. So what we look at is TEA issues guidance for your first rating. They want you to have about 75 days cash on hand. The Government Finance Officers Association also recommends 60 to 90 days. Your bond rating agencies will also ask, look at your general fund, unassigned fund balance and ask that, or they look to see, especially when you're issuing debt, do you have a healthy fund balance for that? So it's really three-fold. State issues that guidance, 75 to 90 days, and then also the Government Finance Officers Association for Financial Reporting also recommends that. And so that's typically the industry standard for that. And really, the way, the 76 days is based on your expenditures. So I just take, if I just take your expenditures and compare it to that fund balance and say, how many days would that last you if you were to take a, an unfortunate downturn in revenues?
Okay, that really makes it plain. It's based on our expenditures and how many days we can cover that, or how many days. That's...
Correct.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Have another item, item number four. Questions for the internal audit pertaining to the monthly audit status report? Ms. Champagne? Are you here?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. This is Champagne.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Champagne? Guess you're doing a good, a great job. I mean, you know...
Thank you, thank you.
So, all right, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey. All right, thank you. Now we will move on to discuss the agenda items listed in posted notice of regular meeting of ISLTA ISD Board of Trustees for November 10, 2020, and any related recommended motions with the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet, and receives responses to questions and or requests for additional information through the Superintendent in preparation, deliberation, and action at the November 10, 2020, regular Board of Trustees meeting, which is tomorrow. I will now review the consent items. Minutes of the Board of Trustees Board Workshop and Meeting by Video Conference, October 7, 2020, 6 p.m. Consent number two, Board of Trustees Special Board Meeting, Video Conference, October 19, 2020, 6 p.m. Monthly Financial Update as of September 2020. Number four, Annual Financial and Compliance Report for Year Ending, June 30, 2020. Number five, Annual Report of Cooperative Purchasing Fees. Number six, Ratification of Award YSD Contract Number 20210042 with University of Texas at Austin. Number seven, ratification of...
I had a question on number six.
Oh, I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Number six is, with the on-ramps, is there ever any classes that are facilitated, or are those classes always have an in-person instructor?
Good evening, Mr. Hagerty, President. The on-ramps courses are taught by our teachers locally in the high schools.
Thank you.
So they're not facilitated.
Okay. Yeah, question on that item? Hey, thank you. Definitely. Item number seven, consent item number seven, ratification of award of YSD contract number 20210050 with the El Paso County Community College and University of Texas at El Paso.
Cruz?
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir. Since the EPCC is my employer, I request that we move that to the action items so that I can abstain from the vote.
Okay, to get that? Okay, we'll move that then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, ratification of award YSD contract number 20210051 with University of Texas at El Paso. So what we are, consent item number seven, and we went to action items. All right, action items. Or this is a policy action items, I'm sorry. One, BE, Local Board Meetings Minutes. Questions? No. Number two, FD, Local Admissions of Older Students. I had a question on this. Could you have clarification on what this actually means in simple English?
Sure. Good evening, President Ochoa, Board of Trustees, Dr. Delatory, Susan Austin, Chief Counsel. I could have made that a little clearer, but this was some language that came to us first by TASBY. We adopted a provision in August, but what this does is make it clear that when we do admit students from age 21 to 26, we will assign them to specific campuses like Plato. So these students who are over age 18, they get assigned to Plato, and that's in Regulation FDB.
And will they be separated from the rest of the younger students at that place?
Correct. So at Plato, it's only for students that are over, that are age 18 and over.
Yeah, I read that last sentence, and it was kind of not as clear to me.
Thank you.
Any other question on this?
And so one, one of the things that I will say is that we have a substitute amendment to make that clear. I, the attachment in the board book is not the right attachment, so I'm going to show you that on the screen, if I could briefly share my screen with you. So if you, can you see that?
No.
No.
No?
Give you permission to share? No?
Ms. Austin, while you're doing that, can I, can I get clarification maybe from Brenda or Ms. Manchaca that the students at Plato are all 18 and over?
Yes, Ms. Lucero, this is Jessica Macias. Yes, all the students at Plato are over 18.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Austin.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So this is going to be, I'm, we're presenting it to you tonight, and we'll also make sure it's part of the minutes in the board book. This is the actual language that's in the FD revised. I apologize. It's just in that first paragraph, it's, it will read, "The district shall admit persons or at least 21 and under age 26," credit recovery program for the purpose of completing the requirements for a high school diploma. So we're modifying the language that exists right now to insert that it is still to a designated campus or credit recovery program.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Austin. Can you unshare?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions on that. Policy action item number three, community relations, visitors, facility use. Okay, let's move on to the action items. Number one, ratification of award of YSD Cooperative Purchase Order Number 22107751 with D&amp;H United Fueling Solutions. That's for the action items, and we will be having a close...
Cruz?
Oh, I'm sorry. Who was that?
It's Sotero.
Oh, yes.
I'm, I'm just kind of curious, and I don't know, probably a Lindley question. I noticed that more fleet services, they're getting away from having their own gas, you know, their own gas pumps and tanks and stuff like that for reasons like this, is the maintenance and the licensure and the inspections and all the costs associated with it. And, you know, and then they just contract with, you know, the local Valera or something like that for those services and, you know... you know, the local Valera or something like that for for those services. And and, you know, there's stations on every corner. Has any consideration been given to that?
Sorry, I had to unmute. So in my time at Sun Metro, I can tell you that we did look into it then, and for a large fleet, it was not cost effective to outsource it, that the cost of fuel was not as inexpensive. And the life of these fuel islands is significant. So the underground fuel system that's there has been there for many years. And it's time to replace it, but I think the life of it was well over twenty five years. If Mr. Rodriguez is here, he may know those answers better than I, but I, they were testing students, so I'm not sure if he has joined us yet.
Oh, no, I have no, I have no doubt, but when I was with the city, I know eventually, I think the public safety actually got away from keep maintaining their own their own gas islands or gas off fueling operations. And and like I said, we went to contractors just for for not deal with the hassle of dealing.
So we did centralize, where we only had one or two of those fuel islands citywide, and then we did contract for emergencies, which we do now, too. We have an outsourced in case we have an emergency at our fuel island that would allow, that would prevent us from fueling in the morning or being prepared for rollout. But generally speaking, even the city still, Sun Metro still maintains and now actually has their own L N G C N G plant onsite, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ramírez. All right. So while we have a closed session, and we have three items there to discuss, which we can't discuss at this time. Ms. Austin, do you have anything to add?
I do. Thank you very much. I do want to explain something that I can explain that's not confidential about the closed session item on SHARs, if I could. So briefly, SHARs is the program for reimbursing schools for certain medical related costs involving students who are disabled to or or who are in special education. We have two items, one in closed session and one in open session. In the closed session, as in-house counsel, I'll discuss the legal issues that are posted there, as you can see, for closed session. But afterwards, when we come out in open session, that's when we would be discussing if the board wants to proceed with discussing engaging outside counsel. That's where we would discuss the actual engagement of outside counsel. And I would be making a recommendation to you about what firm to use for that. And I, the motion is a little complicated. I'm happy to show it to you now. If you would, because it is an open session item, there's nothing confidential about that. And so if I could just briefly share my screen with you. Let me go to that. All right, I know that's this one. Just a minute, let me just get down the page from that. Okay, I don't know if you can see that, but basically, sorry. My recommendation, and I can explain it more tomorrow, would be to engage the Walsh Gallegos firm involved in this and to execute a legal services retainer agreement. And I know that sounds very broad, but it actually gives us a better rate on their billable hours for this matter if you wanted to engage them on this matter. And also as part of the motion, because there's a legal retainer agreement, we would want to designate who in the district could seek legal advice. And then also authorized a superintendent to engage the firm at hourly rates. And and so there may be things that we can turn to to the Walsh firm for that is outside what Jose Martín already does for sped like this SHARs engagement, or what Mr. Blanco does, or Mr. Safi does. The Walsh firm is a great resource. They have broad expertise, and so that's why the motion includes that. And so if we needed to do that, the superintendent, we're asking for authority to do that, but that the superintendent would promptly inform the board if there were any items other than this SHARs matter that we're bringing before you right now. So we're not trying to change anything with Mr. Blanco or with Jose Martín, or with Mr. Safi, or Ms. Morris, or any of those ones attorneys that you already have. It's just that Walsh has the expertise that we need right now on this SHARs matter. So I'll stop sharing, and and if anyone, I can share that motion again with you all tomorrow, and you can edit it as you wish.
Okay. Shannon, I also have a question. I have a question. I guess this would go to Lindley. Being that now this is spoken of here at the workshop as far as the Walsh firm. Do we need to go through regular practices as far as making it a competitive type thing, or we're just fine to to go on ahead and appoint the Walsh firm? I just want to make sure we are doing things with transparency as far as the legalities of it.
I believe I can answer that for you. So legally, forty four oh thirty one and and the companion statutes there, these are considered professional services. And they are not the kind of professional services like architects and engineers. This is another kind of professional service, and we do not have to do any particular procurement for this. So yes, we are complying with the rules.
Mr. Hagerty, did you have a question?
It was similar to my question. There's we don't have any other attorneys or vendors on our vendor list that that deal with shards. These guys are the only ones. Is that why we're choosing to go with them?
Well, we actually asked Jose Martín, who is our sped lawyer about this and ask him if he could do it, or did he, does he have someone he would recommend? He did not say he wanted to do it, so that's why we were looking elsewhere.
So there's only two? There's just Walsh and?
No, no, there are. There are other people, and I I'm happy to explain who I've looked at. I I solicited input from other school district attorneys across the state. Jose Martín gave a name, but also other people said that I I believe E P I S D used Walsh, the Walsh firm extensively on a SHARs matter several years ago. And really, they seem to be the most the firm that got the most consistent recommendations.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? So there's no further questions? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Hey, adjourn. Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.